You go ahead and get started. We've got a short workshop agenda tonight for the zoning board meeting for Court Spring. We have application for a six-foot fence at two thirty main. And then we have a preliminary workshop for fourteen, fourteen first street for a possible addition. And then we're gonna look at public notice signs and improvements. So let's jump in with two thirty main. We're gonna talk about two thirty main.
Oh, okay.
I'll do the minutes.
Could the couples sit at the table that way?
Sure, come on up. You'll be on camera.
Everyone will...
You have to go up to make up her.
Yeah, this is my good son.
It's okay, I'll shoot through a glass.
Okay, so where we left off in May was there were, there was an application for a six-foot fence going around the perimeter of your entire property with the gate across your driveway. And since then, you've changed the plan to lower the fence to four feet except for the boundary between your property and your neighbors to the rest. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that's the only six-foot section remaining, so that's the part that needs the variance before you can go in. So where we left off last time was that we needed, we haven't talked about this earlier, but eight copies of the new site plan and eight copies of the environmental work sheet, the short form. And then we already have eight copies of the application and the survey, so everything else is good. You will want to bring in a new copy of the application where it says what you're asking for.
Okay. Eight copies, that's...
Yeah, sorry.
No, it's good.
So if, the next step would be to schedule a public hearing for that after we review this and have any questions. We wanna go over now and, so if you wanna talk us through the change a little bit?
Sure.
There is a lot of, you heard a lot of reasoning why you wanted to do it about people getting in the property and other bad things happening, so...
Yeah, I mean, aside from the, you know, kind of what we discussed earlier, I mean, a quick recap, it's a dome, no tires, six feet around. We're gonna make the four feet, you know, work for really most of the property. The one section that we're asking is where our property meets our neighbors, which is the section highlighted in yellow. For six feet, just for the added privacy on that side. As far as, you know, reasonings, essentially the same, you know, if you're coming up and treat that direction, you can pretty much see like right into our yard, the back of our, our house. Aside from issues that we had up there already, that's really the one section we'd like to make sure, you know, the fence is a little bit higher. But, you know, other than that, that's the only kind of, I guess, out of the box ask for this project is the added height for that one section.
Okay, so we've got an application, we have the coverage survey, and this seems pretty clear in May.
I think it's probably good enough just for a fence.
Yeah.
So we don't make them get it.
No, I think that's, you know, it's okay, it's what we need.
And Erica, do you want to see everything you need to see on the documents?
Yes, I am.
Yep.
Do we gonna schedule a hearing now or what? I mean, what do we...
Unless there are more questions, I think we could go ahead and schedule a hearing.
So in the application, I don't remember it, but I assume it's, you know, filled out, it's all fine, so I don't know why we just scheduled a hearing.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, did we figure out property owners to notify in a way?
Did we do that back in May?
Well, the email you asked me just to not hold off on that until we had this. So I spoke with Jeff, so I figure after, after we met you guys tonight, I just went down tomorrow morning and then get the list of whatever we need to...
So generally, you're gonna wanna talk to anybody who's gonna be able to see the fence and also your immediate neighbors. So town hall might not be able to see your fence, the six-foot part, but you need to notify them anyway.
Okay.
And so you're, you guys are right here, right?
Yeah.
They're right there. They're right here. No, they're right here. They're, this is, yeah, they're right here.
Yeah.
At the very top, yep.
Right there. Okay. So, um, but this... And this, everybody adjacent here. What's this corner, I don't know what that is. Oh, that's over, that's at, um, I picked, I picked, I picked that one.
That's, that's that big, uh...
Right, it's this...
This is Connie, this is Gordon. Yeah, that's Gordon. Uh, that's Gordon. And Italian, you wanna do the town? There, your town. And this is town too, now. Um, oh, what about any of the, I don't know, any of those people, I don't know. More people, what, Aaron is saying, it's more like here, this kind of area.
Yeah, I'm five and seven, so everybody I stay meets to get an order, so I mean, the realities, our neighbors that are right next to us, they're, can really see it now. And they actually wrote a letter of recommendation, like I sent to Jeff also in support of it, so...
Are those your, are those the, the people that are renovating?
Yeah, yep, yeah, Roger and Linda, so...
And they're built, they're renovating, where they just, they're gonna turn it back into a house?
Yeah.
You know where the gate goes on?
No, they're actually, they're living there.
All right. All right. What about the ones across main? I know there's a second street in there, I don't know if they can see it more.
Um, I would say, you know, at least these three on, on this side.
Go take this.
Okay.
And you...
Great.
Sorry, I got something.
Okay. So we've got, this is you, so we've got Roger, Roger, Linda, Beth Robinson, the town there. Whoever is, is here.
Yeah.
And this, whoever's there, with the four of us.
I think so.
And then across the corner of the big hill, and then the three up from that.
Okay.
So there, it's a lot because you're down and they're all up.
Yep, yeah.
So I will, I will send you, you get that?
Great, thank you.
I will send you a copy of the public hearing notice, and that's what you'll send out to the neighbors. And you can get the, you need the owners, not the people who are living there, it's different.
Okay.
And Jeff can, can help you get that.
Okay.
And if, you can include whatever else you want for some of it. All right, so let's look at, at the calendar. And the next is the twentieth. So does that, that gives us, it's been so long since we've scheduled a hearing. Does that, that gives us...
Two weeks, right?
Yeah, it's two weeks from now. Maybe ten days, so the question is, we still have a ten day thing, I don't know if we changed it?
I think we did, yeah.
Ten days, so that's...
It was a problem with the paper. I think we changed it because it was so hard.
Okay, so if, um, if you can bring all of the copies tomorrow, then we could potentially schedule it on the twentieth, if that works. And if we're able to get a quorum here.
Is it okay if I just leave it to Jeff too?
Yeah, you, you can make them look at it. The twentieth?
Twenty.
Let's see, I think so. Two weeks from today.
Yeah, that's fine, I'll be here.
Okay, great, so we'll point on that, and I will follow up by email, and I'll include the copies, so. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Take care.
Thank you. Good night. Guys, thank you.
All right, so next we have my neighbor Chelsea, who is considering an addition on her house and had some questions come up. So I thought we could do just a very preliminary Q and A with her about what is going to, what she's gonna be looking for in variance. And if they do, they've not applied yet, but if they do apply, I'm gonna recuse myself because we have a fairly close relationship on trade barriers and things. So, but until that point, I'll, I'll participate.
Thanks for, thanks for seeing me. I know that it's not normal that you have season one at this stage, so I appreciate it. Um, so I guess a little bit of, well, first of all, that's my house on fourteen first street. Um, it's an eighteen ninety-two Victorian.
Oh, okay.
Um, it's kind of uphill looking house. And this is...
Gorgeous house.
Gorgeous house. Oh, thank you, yeah, we love it very much. Um, this is the survey, and I, in a number of marking moments, I'll explain it. Basically, we, it's a thousand fifty-eight square feet inside, and we are currently fostering two children and hoping to adopt them. And we need more space if we're going to do that. Um, so the proposal here would be to try to add on in a way that's very sensitive to the nature of the house. Uh, and the best way from a design perspective, my parents are both architects, is just to the right of the house where it currently sits. So this area here is where it currently sits on the survey, and then this is the proposed addition. I don't, I have not invested the time and money into designing what it would look, look like yet and plans because I wasn't even sure if I would get the approval to do it. So I wanted to talk to you all. The contentious piece is that there's seventeen and a half feet from the edge of our house to the rear property line. Um, and I did mark here the current setback rules, so these are these lines that you see here. We're not, we're not within the setback anywhere else except for here.
And how far in is that?
It's seventeen and a half according to the survey.
Seventeen and a half.
There are two and a half feet over the setback. And by yard behind us is a vacant lot that belongs to, actually, it was Catherine's old house, and I don't know...
The Goglers.
Thank you. Um, their house is actually on the lot back here, so this is a, just a vacant lot.
So you, what you're saying, what you would be, if you did this footprint, what you're saying is that the subject of the variance would be right there.
Exactly, and I would just extend the current line of the house.
Right.
So it wouldn't be going out any additional into that area, it would just extend the current over, over the boundary area.
Well, so you have no, you haven't done any, other than doing a footprint, you've got design, no design work?
No, I've talked to my, my mom's an architect, so I've talked to her extensively about it. Um, yeah.
I'm an architect, and I just wanna say that I would urge you to do some, at least have your mom do some sketches. And kind of work things out a little bit.
Yeah.
Because once you get, if you do get variance of this, then she's gonna have to live with that. And it could be that a little misogyny in one way or the other may create a little more variance or take away variance. And, and your mom is probably cheap. I mean, you know, I'm, I'm just, excuse me.
She's not actually.
But I mean, you know, maybe, you know, she would kind of sketch help you out a little bit.
Yeah, she, she's wanting to sketch and help us, help us out.
Just kind of, you know, just kind of...
But I didn't wanna waste her time, and I will have to pay her for attention, she's still working.
All right, well...
But I didn't wanna do all that until I had an idea that was likely to...
Because sometimes lining up sounds great on paper.
Right.
But it actually doesn't respect the old house.
Right.
It, it can extend things, and I don't even know you'd go back to your house. But I'm just saying those things, that you might consider that. That's why we're having these workshops.
Exactly, that's really helpful to hear, I appreciate that. Um, the, the historic elements of our house are really in the front. The back has a, it's not terribly attractive, so it, it's okay, but it's not anything special. Um, and that's why I'm afraid to extend out beyond here because that's, we wanna like maintain that area, that, the turret that comes out as the focal point of the house. Um, and so that's why I think that we actually really do need that full space there.
You don't have to defend it to me.
Okay.
I'm just alerting you to, normally people at least do some preliminary design work before they come to ZBA. Because you've gotta live and die with what that plan is, or you go back through the whole process again.
Right.
So I'm just saying typically that's what happens.
I hear ya.
People do not just do a footprint and go, okay, I wanna do my thing, and then I'll figure out what it's gonna look like.
Right.
Even though they have an architect in mind.
That makes a lot of sense.
And just, you know, you, you and your mom go do what you wanna do, and you don't think against me, I'm just saying that.
No, I, I, that makes a lot of sense. I think we wouldn't go to the next stage without doing those plans. It was more just like, if you guys look at this now and say, that's clearly never gonna happen, I wouldn't, I wouldn't bother with it. Um, so just kind of like getting to know, like, there's, there's a good chance that if, you know, if the neighbors are okay with it, that this could go forward or something like that. It was a complete helpful indication as to whether or not I should sink the time and resources into figuring out this design.
Well, one thing you would have to look at, two is your lot coverage, you know, to see where you are in terms of...
I think we're, this is a sixty lot by a hundred. It's sixty by a hundred, and, um, it's currently, this would make it about one-sixth coverage. So it wouldn't be thirty percent as the rule, sorry? So I think we're, we're well within, within that with, with this addition. Um, because we're a thousand square feet, but it's two stories, so the footprint here is about five hundred fifty square feet or so.
It's also fairly steep block in parts.
Yeah, the whole thing does slope, slope back. This is the, I mean, this is the front of the house here, not back there.
Well, I mean, as, as, as variances go, you know, you're not talking about a, a huge amount of area, so it doesn't seem to be just right off the bat.
Not asking for...
Not asking for, you know, um, something that other people have asked for in different situations or sim, relatively similar situations enough and, you know, at least had a good hearing, you know, there might be reasons. Um, but it looks real, you know, within the realm of possible.
Okay, that's what I wanna figure.
Yeah, it might be similar kind of to, similar considerations to nineteen garden, the daily sauce that's been, I mean, that's a much, visually a much more noticeable change. But the, the actual variance was really small.
Yeah. Is that with the, they were, it's a while ago, right?
Yeah, they've been, it's been a year, I think.
Yeah.
And then the other one we did recently on Bear Street, like my little, they went backwards and they moved there. What do you call it, the gate down to this? So it's, um, so, you know, I...
I apologize, I didn't mean to in any way puke your mom, I just tried to say, she's your mom, you know?
I get it.
You can, you know, get some free sketches from her, she can...
Yeah, I will.
That's what I'm saying.
Definitely.
That's what I'm saying.
No. What would you need in terms of, to go to the next step from her? What, what level of detail?
Well, we don't need anything from her.
Okay.
I don't think, do we, well, we kind of do, yeah, we wanna see, typically we get some elevations and you have some idea what it is.
We have a, we've got a design, a design plan.
When you say design, do you need the exterior design or do you need the interior?
It's more of the, the three D, so we can see the three D shape.
We actually could go over in the application, I think, we could talk about what, when we say we don't want construction drawings, we don't want detailed drawing. We don't want you to go to that extent.
Okay.
To then, you know, not be able to build it.
Right.
So, but for the same token, we do need to know, the neighbor needs to know how high it's gonna be.
Okay.
And, you know, what it's gonna look like against the, the house, you know, just to see, you know, what the situation is.
That makes sense.
But it's not, it's not, it's not construction document level drawings.
Okay, that's all.
It's design drawings, you know, and they show, you show your heights, and you show your relative, you know, alignments and stuff like that. And the site plan has to be very detailed in the sense that you've gotta be able to show, you know, you would, you would, you would say align new with existing. And, you know, you would pull those things out.
Okay.
Your mom would know that, she would know, and you, your ear looks like you're aligning with existing.
Yeah.
You would probably say that.
Okay.
And then you would have a, a dimension, how far are you coming out? And, um, having your setbacks on here is great, as you can see visually. And, and then you would have a little thing saying, yellow shading indicates proposed footprint of exist, of proposed addition.
Okay.
Two-story addition or whatever it's gonna be.
Okay, that sounds good. And I know for the historic district, we will need, this will be the big area at the front, but for you all, you'll also need a back, because of that sort of the, the variance I was...
Yeah, well, that's gonna be, yeah, and then it's also good to kind of just shade in that area and say, this is the subject of the variance.
Okay.
So visually, the board members, everybody knows, okay, this is, that's what, you have the right to build that. And that's the only issue right there. So somebody in the audience might say, well, I don't like that corner, well, you know, tough. Uh, you know, that's the, well, that's what we're considering.
Okay, that's good.
So your next step would be to decide if you wanna do it, and then you would file an application for a building permit.
Okay.
And Jeff gives you a rejection or a refer, referral to the zoning board.
Okay, sounds good. Will I need that level of detail when I file the bill, the permit, or is that only when I come to the board?
Permit's different.
Yeah, so when you need the variance, it's a separate set of stuff.
Okay.
Variance is, it's a design level. Yeah, Jeff will tell you what, what I need for the permit. It's all on the village website, so...
Okay. It said on the application plans, like some of your plans on the permit, as I recall, so...
Well, your permit, then there's gonna be word about building code and...
Right, so...
Wall section and energy efficiency code and all that stuff. So that, then you're gonna be in construction drawings.
Right.
That's step two. You don't even think about a building permit until you know that you have your variance and that you also, you in the sort district, I'm sure, right? You know, so you're gonna have to clear the, the review board.
Definitely.
So, um...
Okay. But even though the, I still need to file the building permit even though I don't have the full building plans yet because, because on there...
They wanna deny it, to send this to you.
Okay.
But they understand.
They know that, okay.
They understand that, that, that you're not going for a really valid permit. Yes, right, they understand that.
Okay, great.
Right.
Great. Thank you so much for the time. I appreciate it. Do you, do you give us, or...
Um, we don't at this point, so we can...
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I hope to see you all later.
New journey. Make them look...
No, we've got, we've got two more things.
No, he has some stuff.
Um, so I don't know if any, anybody looked at my email and saw the notes that I made on the, the sign, the paper hearing on the sign. So I have a feeling that if we make a recommendation to the village board, they will decide to pay for it. And if we can get that out, work through that tonight, then, um, we can send it in pretty quickly, or we could come back and talk about it as well. My feeling, feeling is that, um, we, by doing this, we will open up visibility into the process for neighbors. And also to, you know, all we really require is, um, as we all know, the mail to the neighbors and then, and the paper. Which, um, people probably don't read really so every week, that part of it anyway. Um, so we need to, by doing this, I think we'll, we'll reduce some of the frictional factor. People don't know that something has been noticed properly. Uh, I think our main concern is we wanna make it easy for the village, we don't wanna burden Jeff with a bunch of new paperwork.
So each board then handles its own those requirements?
I think what, it would be something like, I, I think we should just recommend what we wanna do and then let the other, and let the village board sort it out with the other, others. We could certainly choose a generic sign where you write in, "Public hearing for zoning board or historic board," and some kind of respend.
I think a little more detail, good, it gives people a clue whether they really wanna look into the matter. I mean, I think, that's my feeling.
One of the other, um, so I saw three basic, three basic types of signs. One is, "This property is subject of a public hearing, contact for further information," and that's it. Then there's another one where you would put in the public notice into some like a, a real estate informational sheet. Thanks for bringing that out. So you can just reach in and, and grab a copy if you're interested. And then I guess it would be the, the property owner's responsibility to keep that stock of, of hearing notice. So that would get you the most information. And then there's a third variety like this yellow affixed to, where, um, you write in, you respend a certain amount of information.
I think we should make it easy for the village and for the applicant. And, um, I think that we tried this three, four years ago, and we got, we got rolled right into, oh, all the boards should do it. And then, you know, there was all disagreement among the boards about what should be done, and the whole thing went nowhere, so I'm with you a hundred percent. That we just worry about ourselves.
Right.
And if we can make it generic, that's great, but, you know, I think, we don't wanna get hung up with, you know, the, um, I think we, we, this is a great thing that, I think we should, you know, we wanna do this. We should make it, the ones I've seen are very simple. They just say, this is gonna be the subject of a variance or whatever here, and if you need more information, feel, you know, go down to the village office and, you know, and, and ask them for information. And it just worries people. If we start, you know, and, but these are nice, you know, filling in all this stuff, but, you know...
What, as far as that little packet, putting the packet in there?
Where's that?
Yeah.
There's the, the question's gonna be, who's gonna fill all this in? Who's gonna fill this one? The problem with this one is that then you have to update it when, you know, we continue in hearings and all this stuff. It gets to be, and I can guarantee it's gonna be you.
Now it's gonna be the, the owner would go to, to the, to Jeff and get the sign, and then, I think Jeff will do it. I don't wanna create a worry for Jeff.
He's gonna have to.
If we just have a, a plain generic sign, then there's still gonna be contact again.
Yeah.
So he's gonna need to have, I mean, he could refer them to the website. We could just say, please visit the village website for information, the public hearings are posted there.
But it's, it's, already people have the legal right to come, once the legal notice is posted in the paper, they have a legal right to come into the village and say, I wanna see the file, and I wanna see the drawings and the proposal for the upcoming variance hearing.
Right.
And so we wouldn't be doing anything that already is not, already lawful in, in what, what happens.
So it could say something like, please, please visit village hall, or contact village hall for more information, or visit the village website.
Can they go to the website and click on upcoming ZBA hearing for, um, a six-foot high fence at blah, 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 and get all the documents?
No, of course not.
Well, I don't know that, so...
No, they can't.
So, so then...
It's unfortunately not.
Then, then they, they, so when we say go to the village website, all they're gonna get is a day and a time for a hearing, not to be able to review the documents that they want, so... And, and I think some people might be going more, I want more, I wanna know what the, I wanna know what the issue is.
Well, maybe we go back to the, the second one there where you have just notice of public hearing, and you have the insert. And there's just like a little form that the owner would fill out.
For variance.
And, and explain what the nature of the change to the property is being sought, just, you know, and that there is a hearing on some such date regarding this.
Do you have a feeling, or do you have a feeling of what you, you... Do you have a feeling or do you have a feeling of what you, you want to say?
We can't have, we can't have it say variance if other boards are going to use it. So, but it needs to say public hearing.
But on the insert, the insert could be different, like where they could pull it out, like...
So if we did this, what if they didn't stock it, but if it was just one that was printed on the...
Notice of the public hearing?
Yeah, and then the, the notice that gets printed on the table.
And it's a legal notice.
Yeah, it would be the legal notice and for further information, then they would come down to Village Hall.
You see, some people, if they're like looking at the notice and the purpose of it, just to sort of say, "Well, if I can find out right here on the notice what the issue might be, I can decide whether or not I really want to go through going back to the village." I, I just think you should have at least something that gives an indication what the nature of it.
Looks like this is a, just a single piece of paper that's been like glued to the, so the only issue I would have there, concern would be rain. I don't think that's plastic.
So maybe we can find some kind of plastic sleeve to, to put it in.
You could get a plastic sleeve and put it, quote, upside down so it didn't fill up with water. And you just slip it up in there and just put some Scotch tape on the bottom and then you could, there you go. I, I like the idea of the legal notice because that's the, then you're not getting into people trying to describe. It's already, it's a legal description.
Yeah. What do you think, Eric?
Uh, does the legal notice define the nature of the, of the project?
Um, in kind of broad terms, but it does describe the variance pretty.
Do you have to leave the job, please, um, let people know whether to, whether to be worried, whether it affects them?
Yeah.
And it's good that not to leave it up to the applicant to, to write the description. It's that prejudicial. Or like, it's not an objective source for that.
I don't think it would take that much to really just fill in a few, you know, blanks on what we recognize the request of the, you know, applicant to be as far as a variance or something like that. And you just insert it in that. And just, and then say for more information, you know, then see the village clerk, you know, for the applicant's filings.
This, this is, uh, our, at least for the zoning board, our public notices are so much shorter than what we see in this picture.
Oh, there's no doubt about it. I, I, I would think just, you know, refer the section number of the code and, and just say, "Six-foot variance, uh, you know, or a height, a six-foot-high fence saw on, on West Side" or something like that. Or just, you could just put six-foot-high fence.
That's, that to me sounds like the information that a person would be interested in. It's also really close to what's in the, the public notice anyway.
Right, that, that appears in the paper.
Yeah.
Right, but this, this allows people who are in the vicinity, if they've missed the paper, as you say.
Right, so we would just slip the notice and
Right, that's it. But that's it, as long as you're alerting them, really what's going to go on is pretty short and brief and says, "Section whatever." They may not even care about the section. They're, they're more caring about. Yeah.
I think the legal, legal notice is bulletproof. This is completely bulletproof, I think, in terms of.
Yeah, the one that appears in the paper, right?
Yeah.
So why don't we just use that?
We use that and if, and if they have more questions, go to Village Hall and you can pull the documents and you can, you can find out what it is.
We can start with it this way and not overkill.
And we'll see, yeah.
I agree.
So I, there's a couple of other, um, questions that I had about, this is going to be a code change, I assume, for the village board if you add this to the zoning code.
Wouldn't I? I don't think so. I think, I was looking at that and it just said that the village board has to, has to, um, be okay with the application process of the board, but I don't know that. It's not, the way we do our application, I don't think is specifically
Uh, governed by, you know, rules of the trustees. They, they may just simply have to accede to it if they, if they want to.
I, I guess when it gets to them, they'll, they will figure that part of it out. So there, there's some regulations around it, but I thought we could just quickly run through how we want to deal with it. I think sign has to be visible from the street. If it's a corner lot, do we want them to put up two signs, one for each corner? Um, that would be a question. The sign's lost, who pays? Some examples, some that I saw, um, required the applicants to file an affidavit, but that does with the sign.
Yeah, that, that comes to whether we put up the sign or they put up the sign. And so that decision, you know, will have to be made, but I think if they're going to put up the sign, they do submit an affidavit to it. It just, that requires nothing, but it makes them recognize that this is, you know, a significant, uh, part of the application. They, you know, they're taking it serious. It doesn't take much to do that.
That's, those are pretty much the only questions and then
Because the only thing you're going to do is go to a notary.
The period that you had to post it would be the same period that, uh, that we're required to.
So as far as if it's on a corner lot, posting two signs, I'm, I'm either way, whether it is, it could be close, close to the corner or, uh, you know, I'm not sure if it's overkill or anything like that, but...
Okay.
I mean, I don't, I mean, to, to be safe, post two. It's only up for, what, two weeks?
A corner lot.
Huh?
A corner lot.
Yeah.
I think it's supposed to.
It is supposed to, but it's only up for two weeks or thereabouts, right?
So far, I don't
We are calling for an insert that is the notice of hearing. So it's going to have to be right on the property line, I would imagine. It's going to be legible.
So we don't have people walking into people's property.
People should have to cross on the property.
Good point.
Yep.
Is that feasible? I guess that's feasible. I'm just thinking, you know.
Be right against the sidewalk or?
Some, some people don't have
Some sidewalks.
don't have ground to, to put a sign on. They would have to mount that another way.
Well, if they, let's say that they've got a fence right on their property line, they can, you know, they can move wire to their fence. They could, you know, mount it on their fence. They could...
That would be, that would, my house would be an example of that. But there are some where on Stone Street, for example, where they don't have any fences or
Just the face of the house right on the property.
Right on the sidewalk.
Well, if you go on a window, then?
Yeah, I don't know. You know, Scotch tape into the side of the house, like a duct tape into the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Or there's footsteps, front door. Just trying to think of another way to do it.
Yeah, I guess the board have to have different ideas for different types of property.
I mean, it must, it must, it must be able to be worked out because you're, we're seeing these everywhere.
So we can, we can, if somebody has a problem with it, we can address it.
We address it, yeah.
When we, um...
I don't, I'm not seeing, I don't even see this section. I remember seeing just saying that the, that the village trust, the, the board has to basically bless the procedure. And it has to, you know, be in, 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 uh, context, talking about municipal code. Powers and duties.
Can I imagine there's any restriction on it? I just think that, you know, the board can make a request and the board trustees can just simply decide on it as far as a procedural issue.
All right, I compare it as, "The form to be used in applying for a variance or a special permit is attached to this chapter and may be amended from time to time by the village board."
Oops.
It's on, it's three twenty-four dash twenty-five A. And the editor's note is, "Consult the Board of Appeals for the form referred to because it's not in the chapter."
Yeah, okay, so why don't we do this? Um, I'll, uh, I'll draft up a recommendation and send it around and you can, um, I don't think we have to vote on it, but we probably want to have a consensus on it for sure.
Do we, here's the, you sent this, the, this is a form.
Yes, it was instructions, an example.
And I guess that must be an affidavit or a notice or something.
So, so
In the end, who do, who do we want to post it? Board members or just have the property owners?
We want the property owner, owner to do it all.
Yeah, right. I mean, it might make it easier, not only for us, but, uh...
So I, I think they could, they would get any forms that they need from the website and then they would, when the, um, the public hearing is scheduled, they would go and pick up the sign at the village office.
And then you require the update.
Yeah, and they would bring, they would bring that to the public hearing.
Oh, that's good. So what they do is fill in the blanks?
Oh, this is pretty good. They're, they're giving you, they're really kind of nailing it down, but, did you write that?
No, this is, I copied this one.
That's good. I like that. That's pretty good.
I mean, I didn't copy this.
Yeah.
But I
That's the way to all this stuff, you know, it's running the gun.
Okay.
So, um, so I'll, I'll put something together and send it around and then we can review it further if we need to and if the warrant agreement, like, I'll write it.
So what about the part, "It cannot be setback and wouldn't tend to keep from the property line?"
Well, I think we're going to need to change that if we're, if we're posting a copy of, you know.
Because you want, you want people to be able to see it.
Yeah.
Instead of venturing onto their property and having a problem, some
Yeah, so within, you know, as close to the property line as possible.
Speed out. Yeah.
Yeah, getting it.
Pedestrians or whatever.
You have to spray it off. Pretty pretty black.
Yeah.
All right, great. Thank you, everybody, for
Did we do the minutes?
We did the minutes. One set of minutes and then we're done. I, the only question I had on this, um, was on the, the two thirty main. I think they're also in the National Historic District. Can't get to the Historic District.
Another question about a word on top of page two. And the, the last item in that voted this and says, "The application is not self-created." The word "application" seems wrong. Could it be something like the difficulty, uh, the problem?
Yeah, the, or the hardship.
The village does.
Subject of the variance is not self-created.
We should call it the difficulty. Or hardship. I guess if it's a use variance, it's hardship and then it's an area variance. Take your pick. That was a, um, area variance. Yeah, I'm issued, I just, I just can't, I can't find that wording at that. Yeah.
You know, the minutes, I mean, we don't really have to get, get detail. So they covered in the, in the, in the, what do you call it, the, uh, the, the
Yeah.
I think other than what Eric mentioned.
So I guess I would suggest we have
Motion.
A motion to approve with the change of, um, they're working on page two with their board item. And then I will also
I'll make that motion. And what's the date of the minutes?
Five seventeen. I'm also going to look into the, the historic zone and see if that's international or not.
All right, so with those changes, I would approve the minutes for May seventeen, not eighteen. Can I second the motion?
Okay.
All right, thanks.
And it's approved. Anybody have anything else that we can, we can adjourn on?
That's it. What do you intend to speak? First of all, did the, uh, occasion for the west, the six-foot fence come in from the?
Yeah, so we're, we're going to have a hearing in two weeks.
Were they here tonight?
They were here. It was going to be the twentieth.
It was the twentieth?
It's, uh, yeah.
Chance, before you, before you adjourn, you need to go through the drill of sub making a motion second.
Yeah, 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 thank you, thank you. Yeah, so they're the twentieth, seven thirty. That's the only, probably the only thing that I mentioned.
Twentieth, I got Yanks, Red Sox today.
Yanks or Red Sox?
Yeah, that's.
Do you still need another, um, board member? Anybody? Some recommendations?
Well, we'll just keep pushing to find one.
All right, anybody want to?
Yeah.
I, I asked the village board to run it down. I did not follow up to see if they could.
And same time, seven thirty, we're not changing that ever, unless someone wants to pass.
Motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye. I didn't hear who seconded it.
Uh, I seconded. Thank you. I, I left my office like two and a half hours before I got here.
Was it, what, road, train or?
Yeah, they